Good morning, everybody. So I'd like to call to order the Communications and Water Efficiency Committee Meeting and Special Meeting of the Marin Water Board of Directors on November 15th, 2023. Terry, if we could have a roll call, please.
Yes, good morning. Director Larry Russell.
Here.
Director Matt Sampson.
Here.
Director Monte Schmidt. Vice Chair Jed Smith.
Here.
And Chair Ranjiv Kush.
Here. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Are there any public comments on the agenda?
There are none.
Then if we could have a vote, please, Terry.
Yes. Director Russell.
Hi.
Director Sampson.
Hi.
Director Schmidt.
Aye.
Vice Chair Smith.
Aye.
And Chair Kush.
Aye. Are there any public comments and items that are not on the agenda?
There is one. Phil Sauter. You said yes. Okay. There is none then.
Thanks, Terry. With that, then, we'll move to item 4A on our agenda, which is to approve the minutes of our committee and special board meeting that was held on August 16th, 2023. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved. Second.
Could we have a vote, please, Terry?
Yes. Director Russell.
Hi.
Director Sampson.
Hi.
Director Schmidt.
Aye.
Vice Chair Smith.
Aye.
And Chair Kush.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, then. Item 4B is to receive a staff update on our water efficiency master plan.
Mic on. Good morning, board. Carrie Pollard, Water Efficiency Manager, will be providing an update this morning on the Water Efficiency Master Plan. I'm joined with Andre Lee of EKI Environment and Water. She's a vice president there, and she's assisting us in developing this plan. And so Andre will be walking us through the majority of the discussion. We look forward to your comments on this. Starting with a brief overview. So we'll start with the process that we've gone through in developing this plan. We've had a community workshop amongst other steps that we've gone through, and so we'll touch on those. We'll look at some of the measures that were evaluated, including a discussion on the incentive program changes that we've discussed during prior board meetings. We'll wrap up with some potential portfolios and targets that have been developed as samples for discussion, and then wrap up with the ordinances and some pilot programs that have been developed as part of this process. So with that, I'll turn it over to Andre. One more. There you go.
Excellent. Good morning, Chair Kush and members of the board. Thank you for having us this morning. So the process for developing the master plan included several elements. The first was to take a look at your existing programs and understand the saturations of programs and particular devices within your service area. A second piece was developing new or revised policy concepts for the board's consideration. A third was looking at cost-effective incentive programs that could be implemented as part of your overall conservation program. A fourth was looking at new opportunities for innovation, such as pilot programs or participation in research. And a fifth element was evaluating your remaining conservation savings potential and establishing savings targets and associated portfolios of programs to achieve that potential. To date, we have completed the evaluation of program saturation. We've calculated your savings potential, looked at your range of program and incentive options, sought input from your community through a community workshop, and evaluated the cost-effectiveness and savings potential of particular incentives. The next step is establishing savings targets and your conservation program approach to be incorporated into the master plan report. Sometimes when we jump into the water efficiency master plans for various districts, we find a lot of low-hanging fruit, so to speak. That was not the case within this district. Marin Water has a comprehensive and successful water use efficiency program. Your existing program includes a broad mix of water efficiency measures that are comparable to the most aggressive agencies in California. And it also includes some innovations, award-winning program concepts. You have consistently pushed the envelope on water use efficiency, which is great. Your water use profile of your community reflects the success of your program. The district's residential per capita water use is lower than 75% of California, and the district is well-positioned to comply with the new state water use efficiency standards. Your current water efficiency program budget for 2024 is about 3.3 million, and your conservation program is longstanding. Your first water conservation master plan was developed back in 1989. Diving into your current water use profile a bit more. One element that provided real value in this study was your FLUM home water use monitoring program. There was some new data available for this study that had not been available for previous studies that really shed some insight into your current levels of water use, indoor and outdoor, and remaining potential. Based on the FLUM data, the district's indoor residential per capita water use, so the water used indoors by your residential customers, was 31 gallons per person per day in 2022. By comparison, the 2016 national average indoor residential use was about 55 gallons per person per day. And the state indoor residential efficiency standard for the new requirements is 47 gallons per person per day. Your indoor per capita water use was among the lowest indoor water use measured by FLUM. Your total residential per capita water use, including both indoor and outdoor uses, is 62 gallons per person per day in 2022, which is also exceptionally low compared to state and national averages.
Can I ask a question about that data? Is that comparing other FLUM data elsewhere in the country? So it's apples to apples in a sense, like the people who participate in FLUM might be conservation-conscious people, and so we want to be comparing them to similar type people elsewhere?
Yes, this comparison was based on other FLUM programs and users.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Did you look at the AMI data also?
We did not dive into the AMI data as part of this.
I think you should, because I think it gives you a contrast to people who didn't opt in. It just showed up. So you don't have that potential bias that was just mentioned. And it seems to me there's enough of them, there's 6,000 or something, to make a valid comparison.
Thank you. So the next piece was looking at how much more efficient Marin Water could get. Given how efficient you've already become, what is your remaining conservation savings potential? And the purpose of this analysis was sort of to provide an envelope, or truth check, so to speak, for potential water efficiency programs and targets that you might set in this process to make sure that you weren't over-projecting your savings potential or arbitrarily aiming for something lower than what you could achieve. We looked at a few options for targets. So on the low end of the spectrum is remaining passive savings potential. This is the additional conservation savings that the district would realize between now and 2045 from natural replacement of plumbing fixtures and code updates to slowly drive your service area to greater levels of efficiency. So that number is about 2,500 acre feet per year. You will see that number again in this presentation as it's captured in the conservation savings portfolio options that we will share later. The next box, this light greenish box, is what we're really focused on for the master plan. And this is the cost-effective savings potential. The savings that you could realize through incentive programs that could be achieved cost-effectively compared to the cost of your other supplies. On the high end of the bound, we looked at the technical maximum savings potential. And this is really focused on how efficient would you be if you locked in the savings from drought response? You maintained outdoor water use at the same levels that you saw during the drought period, in addition to saturation of efficient fixtures within the service area and extreme maximum new efficiency levels for new development. On the high end, we have this theoretical ceiling. This is not an attainable value, but just kind of the high end of the bound. This is what your savings potential would be if you assume that you could get all of your customers to be as efficient as your top quarter of customers were in 2022 during the drought response. That value is not likely to be achievable for a variety of reasons, but it kind of represents the high bound of where you could go on the maximum efficiency scale in a perfect world. The next part of the analysis was evaluating potential measures for the master plan. As part of this, we looked at both your existing measures as well as some potential new measures that were identified in conjunction with your staff as well as through input received in the stakeholder workshop. I won't walk through all of the existing measures, but to give you an overview of the potential new measures. One is commercial large landscape water budgets. This is a type of program that's been implemented successfully by others in the Bay Area, and it involves developing site-specific voluntary water budgets for your large landscape sites and providing periodic reporting on actual use compared to budgeted use, taking into account actual observed weather conditions. A second is a residential water budget pilot program. This would be a similar voluntary program, but specifically targeted towards your large residential water users. Third, and some of the other programs on this list kind of fall into the same category of programs that might bridge the gap between things you're already doing to make them a little more accessible to certain segments of customers. So you already provide for, as part of the AMI, some leak notifications. The Leak Repair Discount Program is a model that's recently been implemented by a few agencies that helps to provide support for customers who know that they have a leak but either don't have the financial resources to fix the leak or don't know where to begin with contracting for services and finding somebody to do it. A fourth new potential program is a large landscape conversion incentive programs for municipal accounts. This will provide similar water savings benefits to what you see from, say, your Cash for Grass program, but would really be targeted at the municipal large landscape accounts and converting portions of those to water-efficient landscaping. Fourth is the Water Efficient Landscape Direct Install Program. And this program would seek to bridge the gap between customers who are interested in participating in the Cash for Grass program but don't know where to start with getting a design, securing contractor services to provide a more full-service, white-glove approach to Cash for Grass. And a final measure was the district-wide AMI implementation, looking at expanding AMI district-wide.
I have a question. Your Leak Repair Discount Program is interesting. It seems to me that it would be logical here to explore the potential for a pay per month, like an insurance policy, that there are commercial accounts, commercial businesses doing this now, but we'd offer it to the users to, say, I don't know, you know, $5 or $10 a month, and we take care of your problem. So I think that should be added to that one, at least a consideration of that.
Great. Thanks for that suggestion.
I'd be open to learn more about that. Yeah, any data, Larry, or anyone that wants to pass on? That sounds interesting.
I've already passed on the stuff to Ben, I believe. There's been brochures. There's commercial companies, you can Google it, I mean, that offer this service for lateral repair. And I never looked into the pricing, but I just thought it made sense. We could do it too.
Yeah, it is interesting. There are programs out there for sewer laterals.
Water.
Water, I'm not aware of.
Water.
I'm not surprised. Similarly, they haven't really kind of taken hold, but they are out there, and they do seem worth exploring.
I would agree with that. They haven't really caught on. But, you know, it seems crazy to me to give the money away to a private company when we can, you know, basically do it. I don't know what the number is. I don't know. Do we have any? Well, how many leaks are there?
A year. Can I ask just a clarifying question on that? Is this actual full house, like anywhere in your house-type leak rebate? Meaning that, you know, if your toilet's leaking in your wall, you call a contractor, and that is what we're talking about?
Yes, this would be a full service program potentially to help pinpoint where in the house the leak would be occurring and repair.
So not just the lateral. Okay, thank you.
Just a lateral.
But we already do that for free, right? Toilet leaks? We do the dyes, provide the dye, send the person out, right?
Provide resources to notify customers that they're leaking? This would be a program to assist them with actually making the repair.
I thought we actually sent people out to actually look at the toilets. As part of the survey of the home.
Well, we do have the Customer Assistance Program. You want to touch on that?
Yeah, so through our CAP program, our Customer Assistance Program, staff will go out and check fixtures for efficiencies. They'll do a dye-tab test to help the customer determine whether or not they have a leak.
I mean, that is that kind of assistance. Doesn't fix it, but at least identifies it at no cost.
Correct.
The tougher piece seems to be, at times, leaks in the irrigation system that customers are having a hard time finding.
Yes.
So after identifying and reviewing the potential measures, the next step was to provide some benefit-cost analysis to see which of these measures could be implemented cost-effectively for the district. The benefit-cost ratio calculated the water savings compared to the, a cost of water of about 1,400 per acre foot, consistent with the Sonoma water. Cost of water escalated at about 5% annually. And so as we're going through this, you might say, oh, some of these don't pencil out as cost-effective versus that 1,400 per acre foot current cost of water. That is because the cost of water is assumed to escalate, and the savings extends beyond a single year. So this analysis showed that of these incentives, 15 of them could be implemented cost-effectively for the district. And the cost effectiveness varied. Things like high-efficiency faucet aerator giveaways are very cost-effective, but maybe don't have a ton of savings potential. Versus even AMI district-wide implementation came in as cost-effective overall. There were five measures that did not identify as being cost-effective as part of this. This included rain barrel and cistern rebates, the Water Efficient Landscape Direct Installation Program, laundry-to-landscape graywater rebates, the Residential Water Budget Pilot Program, although I will caveat that savings numbers for that are a bit of a question mark, given that it would be a new program tested out. And then the CAP program for single-family residential customers.
So before we move into the portfolios that kind of break out each of these incentives into, you know, various buckets, if you would, to put them into establishing targets and developing portfolios, I wanted to just circle back to some of our prior discussions, if I can figure out how to make the computer advance, around changing our rebate programs. And so at prior board meetings, we've discussed sunsetting our high-efficiency toilet rebate program and our clothes washer rebate program, and then developing a new program offering focused on our commercial-industrial-institutional dedicated irrigation and multifamily customers. And so at the December 5th board meeting, there'll be an action item brought before the board to approve or consider these changes. And so I just wanted to provide a little bit of a reminder of what they were. Since our last discussion around the new program offering of the custom rebate, we've kind of refined what that program would look like, and so I wanted to provide a bit more detail. And this would provide support to folks like schools, apartment dwellers, restaurants, any kind of commercial business that can find a process change, not behavioral, but a process change that provides water savings. And then we can help fund that improvement. The savings would be a required component. Water savings would be a required component, meaning if someone converts their landscape, business converts their landscaping to a well, that wouldn't qualify, because there's no real water savings, right? They're just moving from one source to another. So we're really looking for some quantifiable water savings in this program. When we look at how we would determine what the rebate would be, we've evaluated kind of two metrics, two measures. One would be, and it would be the lesser of the two. One would be based on three CCFs per water, per CCF saved, $3 per CCF saved, based on against the cost of Sonoma water in 2024. The other would be 50% of the project cost. And I have some examples to kind of walk through what that might look like.
Before you leave that, I don't understand your example. If a customer puts a well in place, were they able to do that? It is 100% savings of the water to us.
If we take it under the office of kind of one water, right? Say, the goal would be to not just offset our potable demand, but to, you know, provide additional efficiency within the entire community. That's kind of the mindset, but I think it's open for.
I think that's fine as a goal. I don't know that it's really our job to do that. It seems to me that if someone were wishing to set up their own water supply to their own residents, I think, I don't know, we shouldn't encourage that necessarily, but it does take load off of our system. And there is a debt benefit to the district of that. So I'm not sure that's really the goal we should be aiming at. One water is fine, but I think one water needs to stand on its own feet.
I think that that's true, but we have to be careful that if those wells go in along any of our, like, along Maganitas Creek, then that water, that well has a, could have a depletion impact on stream flow, which impacts our ability to meet our flow targets. So it's kind of a where question that I think would need to be considered too, if we're developing some sort of policy around this.
So does that mean we should link better with Marin County on well approvals? Because they're the ones who do it, right?
Yeah, I mean, because there can be, you know, there can be other societal impacts of sticking wells all over the place, you know? So we don't want to, the last thing we would want to do is do something that incurred, that maybe reduces our, you know, makes our water supply reliability go up, but causes other impacts. So I just, I think, you know, there's been a lot of well diversions over the past decades that haven't been fully thought through, and we're doing that differently these days in California. So I think we just, if we're going to venture into that realm, we need to do that with more thought. Speaking of diversion, this is a diversion, but is that something, if your thought is that having a one-water approach, which I agree with, is one that we should take into consideration with our policies, then we should link with Marin County more and how they think about it, and what are the current relationships? And maybe we can have that as another discussion. Sounds important.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Maybe related to that, Carrie, is also, regulations are in place for domestic wells, wells for domestic purposes. I'm imagining those are pretty carefully regulated and may not be good options for very, for most of us.
I think the regulation isn't, it isn't in the regulations. It's in the physical inability to develop groundwater here in Marin. Because of our geology, my understanding is that generally wells produce something in the order of 1 GPM. So now, well, like what Monte's talking about, it's a little different. If you were to try to do that, I don't know how many homes are but the creek. But, you know, 1 GPM, pretty light. That's 1,400 gallons a day. I mean, it's enough if you have the facilities to store it, and, you know, means a tank, and it means a backflow device if you're still hooked up to the water district and a bunch of other things. But I think you would find it's less regulated than you might think.
One example that actually, what prompted this discussion was a yacht club that put in a well that wants to use the water to wash boats, as opposed to using potable water, which makes sense, right? But the quality of water isn't drinking water, so they're still have access to potable water at, you know, each spit. So is that really going to provide a benefit, right? So it's just things we need to take in, meaning are we going to see some water savings, even though they may provide this alternative water source for boat washing?
So they would have two spigots?
Exactly. And so then will folks use this non-potable water? We don't know, right? So how, we want to ensure we get water savings, I guess, is really ultimately kind of the intent. And each one of these projects would be analyzed independent of each other so that we can really understand the impacts and value add.
Yeah, I'm sure they will use it. The question would be, or in my mind, is will they misuse it? I mean, by accident, I don't know what kind of markings they would have on that, you know?
So many questions.
Because the boat's there, there's the hose, you know, and they're so used to just taking the water from the hose. Interesting concept. I think it would likely, I don't know where the yacht club is, but it would be salty enough that it's probably not. You probably would only make the stake once.
Carrie, while we're on this, I'd like to actually follow up, not on the well piece of that bullet point, but on the recycled water piece, how that wouldn't be included in the conversion as well. And while I get the one-water concept, I still think we're so underutilized, the ability to produce recycled water or consume the recycled water being produced right now, that I'd like to see more incentive to use that. Because right now, especially on the landscape piece of that, within the distribution current footprint, it makes sense to have that as an incentive, as opposed to rely on the potable water for folks in there.
This is great feedback. I appreciate that we're having the discussion, and we'll look at that before it comes back on the 5th. These rebates would be paid 50% upfront to help offset the cost of the improvement, and then the remaining 50% after the savings were actually demonstrated. And anything that exceeded 25,000 would require additional administrative approval. So it's, you know, we want to make sure that the funds are going to appropriate projects. I wanted to just include three examples here. So we have, on the left, is the measure that have actually, other utilities have actually incentivized through a program like this. So installation of an ozone washing machine, so this is like industrial-grade washing machines, a recirculation loop, and then a dentist that converted from a wetback to a dryback. You can see the water savings there, and then the measure costs. And in the middle of the table shows what the rebate would be calculated based on savings at $3 per CCF versus 50% of the cost, and it would be the lesser of the two. And then that is the sample rebate amount on the far right, and then the cost per acre foot. And so, you know, if this pencils out to be cost-effective, these are the kind of projects we want, we would want to encourage through a program like this.
What is a water recirculation loop?
Yeah, so it was a, they didn't, wouldn't give me the details, right? Because it's proprietary, but it was insulation of a recirc instead of just having a go, water goes straight down the drain. I think it was for cooling, if I recall.
One comment, because I thought it was something else. We've had a recurrent speaker talk about this device that takes the hot water and moves it to the cold water line. All EPA literature that I am familiar with says, do not drink the hot water and because of the increased metals concentration. And I think that system basically violates EPA's advice because it's shoving the hot water into the cold water. And it's even worse than that, because it shoves the hot water into the cold water, and the first draw from the cold water is going to be the water that was just shoved over from the hot water side. So I think we need to be very careful about that particular device. It's clever, but it offers some real concerns from a water quality standpoint, I think.
Very good. Thank you. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Andre to talk about the portfolios.
Yeah. So the next step was taking those individual measures and packaging them into conservation program portfolios that the district could consider implementing going forward. We looked at three portfolios. Portfolio A included just the cost-effective incentives, those with that benefit-cost ratio greater than 1 on the chart I previously showed you. The second was the beyond cost-effective incentives. This included everything that was in the cost-effective portfolio, as well as the additional customer support programs and pilot programs that didn't necessarily get above that line, but perhaps provided additional education or customer service benefits. For example, your CAP program that's been mentioned is one that does not pencil out as cost-effective, but quantifying the education benefits and the customer service benefits, it's hard to do with this type of analysis. So that was included in this portfolio.
Andre, could I interrupt for a minute? Just on the analysis of cost-effectiveness and cost-benefit. So what I am, I think what I'm following is that something qualifies as having a positive cost-benefit number greater than 1 if the cost per acre foot is less than $1,400.
Yes, big picture. You're correct. It is, something is cost-effective if the savings per unit cost for it is more, if the unit cost is less than what you would be paying for an equivalent amount of water from Sonoma water. The difference sometimes, because these measures have longer-term savings, so you might implement something and get savings for 10 years, that initial unit cost number could be above the current cost of Sonoma water. But over the long run, the measure value will still pencil out as being. But over the long run, the measure value will still pencil out as being more efficient than purchasing the equivalent amount of water.
Right. So I think that was the second point I was trying to get. So it includes some analysis or estimation of the total savings that might be achieved through these measures.
That is correct.
We don't, we didn't see that data, though. So for example, more efficient fixtures, what's the total savings that we could accomplish across the district? Given, you know, a certain uptake rate, you must have that that data as well.
We do. All of the detailed analysis and data has been completed and will be available in the draft report.
Thank you. And how do you arrive at the life? Because you're you're talking about it loosely, like X years, but how many years are X years? How, you know, I've made this argument many times. It's a one time investment and it returns forever. But I think we need to put a time on forever. Because I think this needs to be put more into a quantifiable number. Like we can assume a life of, I don't know what a faucet is, 50 years, 100 years. I'm having a little trouble envisioning how a faucet could actually make much difference, but I suppose it can, at least in commercial. But other things that have definitive life, where they have to be re-upped, and then the cost starts again. So I could see that as a good definition of the time or the potential savings to, because the term cost effective is very subjective in my thinking. You know, it depends on the definition.
You are absolutely correct. This, we use the Alliance for Water Efficiency model for this analysis. And in looking at that, there are a couple of parameters. One is the lifespan of each individual measure. That varies quite a bit from measure to measure. So you might have some that are informational type program where you've got a useful life of one year. If you do not keep putting that out every year, you will lose the savings benefit. Others like replacing a fixture, you could be looking at a lifespan of 10 years or 15 years. And the other piece that the model does take into account is that passive savings crossover. It makes sure it's not double counting. So if you're replacing a fixture that would have been replaced anyway in 10 years, it doesn't give you savings credit for both.
Yeah, I understand, and I may have the numbers wrong, but I understand that 75% of the flume devices are no longer active. They're physically there, but they're not talking to the internet. So, you know, that's an interesting number two, that they were willing to spend 150 bucks, or we spent 150 bucks, I don't know exactly who paid what. But the end of it was that they no longer see a value, apparently, of even taking the effort to keep it connected to their local internet. I mean, it's not much effort. It's just hooking it up. It's no physically, nothing about dirt or anything.
We had 2,500 flume devices installed and about 2,000 are still actively connected.
Okay, so I got it the wrong way. Okay, so 25%.
There is a drop off rate, absolutely. And there's a decay rate that's built into the model as well. So that we're not assuming these savings go on forever, depending on the type of measure that's being analyzed.
But of course, some do, like a washing machine, that's a permanent change. It uses less water permanently, a toilet permanently uses less water. So every event that occurs at that device is benefited by its changes. So that, you know, other ones don't have that problem.
But but it sounds like many of these things that we're raising are actually have been considered and are incorporated into the model that you're using.
That is correct. The model looks at each measure individually and includes things like a specific lifespan for savings and decay rate based upon a combination of your specific data and industry data and research from others.
I think that as the first person who asked the question that stopped your presentation, I'm, I think that it will, we're going to have a lot of questions as we go through this. And maybe we should let you just present the concepts to us and we can try to bundle our comments together. Because we'll, thank you so much. I think that presenting to us sometimes is like a bit of a grind because we were instantly like wanting to know and ask questions and understand the assumptions, which is our job, which can make it hard to get through a presentation in front of us. So I appreciate your patience with us and answering our questions. And and this has been fantastic. It's really helpful. So thank you.
We appreciate the interest in the dialogue. So I want to make sure we get you all of the information. So the third portfolio, we've talked about the cost effective incentives and the beyond cost effective incentives. The third portfolio is the most aggressive. And this is basically looking at how much savings could you potentially get from implementing all of the modeled measures at implementation rates that are really pushing the envelope beyond the levels of participation you have historically been able to achieve through your programs. So to provide you a little more detail on what is in each of these portfolios, the slide shows the portfolio A cost effective incentives that are included. This includes a combination of many of the incentives that you were currently offering as well as some of the new incentives that were above that benefit cost ratio line that we shared. Portfolio B includes everything in portfolio A as well as four additional measures that were not necessarily cost effective on their own. The Water Efficient Landscape Direct Installation Program, Rain Barrel and Sistern Rebates, the Residential Water Budget Pilot Program, Laundry to Landscape Graywater Kits, and the CAP program for your single family residential customers. Portfolio C includes all of the same measures as portfolio B, but it bumps up the participation levels. It assumes very aggressive marketing and outreach to drive participation above what you have historically been able to achieve outside of drought periods. So how much water could you save from each of these portfolios? This chart shows the savings potential in 2045 from each of the three portfolios. The dark blue bar at the bottom is that passive conservation savings number that we shared at the beginning. This is the additional savings you would anticipate seeing through 2045 just through natural replacement of plumbing fixtures and code changes. The light blue bar above it is the additional active savings that could be achieved from each portfolio. And you can see that the range is not huge between the cost effective incentives and the most aggressive. Part mostly because there were a lot of measures in that cost effective bucket. So for just implementing the cost effective incentives, you could achieve about an additional 1,639 acre feet per year of savings in 2045. And the unit cost of this portfolio would be about 1,686 per acre foot, including overhead costs.
Sorry, Andrew, quick interruption. The portfolio unit cost, does that include the cost of implementing the measures?
Yes, that all of these include overhead costs associated with implementing the programs. For portfolio B, the savings will be slightly higher, 1,684 acre feet per year from active savings at a unit cost of 1,830 per acre foot. And for the most aggressive portfolio, portfolio C, the savings would be 1,762 acre feet from active savings. So for a total savings of 4240 acre foot per year in 2045 at a unit cost of 2309 acre feet per year. You'll notice that that unit cost is quite a bit higher than portfolio B, even though it includes the same measures. And that's based on the overhead assumptions. To be able to push participation to that high of a level would require a lot of increased staff time and effort that would drive up the overall cost of the program. You'll see that orange dotted line at the top is that technical maximum conservation target that we shared upfront. None of these portfolios alone could get you quite to that technical maximum number. They still leave a little bit of room. And getting to that next increment of savings through that would likely require ordinance based programs in addition to the customer incentive programs we've talked about.
I think it is safe to present this number before it gets to. I don't think it's any way possible to predict that the savings is $1,630. You should be using either 1,600 or at those. Giving three significant figures, 1,650. I think it shows a lack of judgment, very sensitive. And you just can't, this is numbers to go kind of fine tune. And I understand it's a calculated number. But then you have to use judgment on top of that, because now you can't predict that. So I would just be revised to give two significant figures or three at the outset, but definitely not four.
It's a good point, Larry, but the the take homes won't change, right? The the so that's a good point. I think, yeah, great.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So the next step was to look at what these portfolios would mean in terms of the district's per capita water use. And we've looked at that in 2030 here because we wanted to compare it with the state standard and target in 2030 to see how your water use would line up to your state target with implementation of these. As a baseline for this, we used your 2020 gross per capita water use. And I do want to pause and clarify that when we were talking about your water use profile previously in the flume data, we were looking at your residential per capita water use. This is your total district wide water use compared to your district population. So your baseline 2020 per capita water use was 120 gallons per capita per day. And your estimated state standard for efficient use in 2030 is 118 gallons per capita per day, slightly below your 2020 use. That dotted orange line is your drought per capita use. During the height of the drought, you were at 100 gallons per capita per day gross use. And each of these targets compares to to those bounds. And you'll notice for the three portfolios, we've got estimated gross per capita use of 104 gallons per capita per day and 103 gallons per capita per day. Those are slightly higher than where you were in the drought. We know from past droughts that absent additional extreme measures, some rebound would be anticipated. You probably wouldn't get back up to that 120 number, but staying at 100 GPCD is not realistic. The portfolios really look at minimizing that rebound and keeping your use efficient in the long term. As an additional piece of the master plan, we've looked at some potential future ordinances. As you saw, implementation of some of these incentive programs alone would not get you to your technical maximum. So there's some ordinances the district could consider to bring you closer to that. There's not a lot of new ordinances on this list because you already have, compared to state standards, some fairly aggressive water use efficiency ordinances. Some of the ones that were considered, one based on feedback from the community workshop was an ordinance for hot water recirculation, the development of a district code to mandate applicants for new water service and those implementing significant renovations to implement a hot water recirculation system and accurately size their piping to minimize wait times for hot water. A second ordinance option was a retrofit upon resale ordinance, which would require that all residential buildings at the time of change of ownership be retrofitted to exclusively include high water efficiency fixtures. And a third potential ordinance is a limitation of new nonfunctional turf area limits for your residential customers. These limitations already exist on the commercial, industrial and institutional side. This would pose a similar restriction on limiting or banning future installation of nonfunctional turf in single family residential or duplex sites.
The number one, are you familiar with Salinas, with their ordinance?
Not specifically.
Okay, well, what happened in Salinas is they have small, small houses. Generally, you don't look at recirc in a house smaller than about 5,000 square feet. They forced it into all houses, resulting in plumbing failure in 100,000 homes in Salinas, brand new homes. What happened is the smallest recirculating pumps are too big. So the velocity in the recirculating pipe was too high, causing it to fail. And this was a huge lawsuit in Salinas. It's, it's a good idea. It's difficult to implement because, like I say, it's designed for bigger homes. And when you do it with a small home, then it gets complicated because the equipment isn't designed to fit the small home. So it's not, we shouldn't abandon the idea, but we need to be very, very careful because the lawsuit that resulted in Salinas was horrendous.
Thank you. That's interesting insight.
All right. Here we are at the summary. So summary and next step. So as I mentioned on the fifth, an item will be brought back for the board's consideration, making changes to the toilet and clothes washer rebates, unsetting those two and establishing a new custom rebate. We'll work on defining our portfolios and the associated water savings, which ultimately rolled into the draft water efficiency master plan, which will come back to the board with recommendations at a future meeting. We've had questions along the way, but we're happy to take any additional questions or or comments.
Larry, anything else?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's great, Larry. Jeff?
I don't understand the benefit of sunsetting the refunds. How much does it cost us to maintain it? Because it seems to me that, I mean, the work is in setting it up, I think, not so much in implementing it. And I mean, don't we cooperate with PG&E now and they actually do the heavy lifting? We don't do that anymore?
There's no coordination with PG&E. All of our clothes washer rebates are issued directly by the district. Most of the staff time that's spent on these programs is actually denying the 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 rebates because the incorrect fixtures being purchased, because they're buying a toilet. Folks are buying a toilet or a clothes washer and then coming to us and saying, can I get a rebate? They don't do the research upfront, so we're not motivating them with our incentive to 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 buy a more efficient fixture. So the cost is fairly low as far as the number of rebates. We budget about $10,000 for each of those programs each year.
And what's the cost of implementing it?
That would be the staff time on top of that. I'm not going to guess.
Also the issue of, you know, natural replacement, the saturation. If they have no choices but to get a low efficiency toilet, at this point, most people that are replacing toilets are doing it because the toilet failed, not because they're motivated to save water. And if their toilets failed, you go to replace the toilet, you don't have too many choices. So why would we give them money to do what they pretty much have to do anyway? So that's the other kind of, at some point you reach that saturation level.
Maybe we could consider incenting Home Depot or whoever is the bulk supplier. Because I have 1.5 French toilets that I put in in 92 when I moved here. And I went to seriously look at 1.1s. I couldn't find a 1.1. They're all jimmyed around the numbers. There are 1.1s with dual flushes, sort of, but they don't really have, at least I couldn't find 1.1s. Maybe I'm looking in the wrong place, but it took the wind out of my sails for replacing them. I would replace them with or without the incentive because I believe in the idea. Same thing I did in 92, wasn't required at that time to do it. I just did it because it made sense. And, you know, the the other thing I'd like to see on your data is, what was the water usage GPCD during the drought in 76 to compare it? I don't know the numbers off the top of my head. I think they're higher than the numbers you quoted there. But because there's still seven gallon flush toilets at that point in time. That's the time of the bricks in the back of the tank and all that stuff.
Larry, on that point, though, eventually rationing kicked in, so we were limited to 35.
Sort of. Not, not exactly, but sort of, highly incentive, let's put it that way. Anyway, if you can do that easily, if it's not easy, then don't worry about it. But I think it would be an interesting number to show on there to show the effects of the demand softening that has resulted from the water conservation implementation since 76.
Thanks, Larry. Jed?
Yeah, thank you, Carrie and Andre and Paul and team for putting this analysis together. I am super appreciative of the analytical work and the analytical approach, looking at our water efficiency and conservation efforts as compared to other supply and, and storage options and costs. So having this kind of master plan and, and community input is hugely appreciated. So, and, and I think there's some more work to do. I, I feel like our targets are low for 2045. I feel like we can do better. I, I, and I think, you know, some of our efforts will be fruitful, but we have so much more room to encourage our, our community to reach. And, and I would have those targets very clear for folks, especially the biggest users. But, but I, I would, I would put communications as probably the most important thing we can do for water efficiency. And I would have that budget be thoughtful on how we can articulate to our community the importance of it. My hunch is that that is the number one water savings effort that we have, even though the turf is extremely important. I, I think we should be thoughtful about it. I think your options A, B, and C didn't vary a lot in terms of water savings. They varied. So, so per Larry Russell's point, that it's very hard to tell actually if there was any real incremental difference. They seemed like within a standard deviation of the exact same. So therefore, why spend more money to get almost the exact same? So something is either wrong with that or there just wasn't, there wasn't enough options for us to look at. But with that said, it sure looked like B and C aren't worth it from the way you presented the data. And so seeing the real data behind all the different options and the real savings and how you came up with those numbers will be really important for us to make any judgment or decision on which items to keep going. But with what you showed with that one slide that had the different options, you know, the below the line sure seemed like they weren't worth it. And we have seen data around our rebates for rain buckets and laundry to landscape and some others that sure don't seem to pan out. I think we can still encourage people to use it, but that's probably not the best bang for the buck for our dollars to spend. I, I, on the flip side, I think our non-functional turf is probably towards the top. And, and I think some, some ordinance in that regard would probably be warranted. And, and then lastly, I, you know, I, I think you had full system wide AMI as part of it. And I'm not sure if you want to be thoughtful about targeting that rollout. And it'll probably be more effective if we can reach folks that are the largest water users early or some sort of, you know, analysis around what's the best way to get that data out to folks. So I guess in summary, I think we can shoot to do a lot better than what you have. And I think this should be a critical part of our water supply roadmap. And I'm looking forward to the next, the next stage.
Great. Thanks Jed. Matt?
Thank you again for the presentation. It's very helpful. And I think it, it again highlights the efforts that the rate payers have gone through to conserve water. We see the numbers compared to the area and they're just, I mean, they're impressive. And I think what also should be reiterated is when the governor asked for drought reductions for the past two years, Marin water customers really stepped up where the rest of the state did not. So we are doing our part and I think that where we're looking at all of these incentives seem to keep driving that indoor use is not really the challenge anymore. We've kind of checked that box and we're moving towards the outdoor. Not to say we shouldn't continue to re-educate as generations come in and, and people move into the area. But really where we should be focusing our efforts is the exterior water use, especially with non-potable water use outside for those, for those purposes. So I appreciate all the info going into it. And the graph with the above the line, below the line was very helpful to see those numbers as well. With that question on slide, I think it was 19, and you don't have to bring it up, but that was the one that showed the 2030 per capita gross water use for potential targets. And then with the cost effective program going from 120 to 104, does that assume that all of those above the line measures are implemented and being used fully throughout the district when you see that drop?
So it assumes kind of the standard annual implementation rates between 2024 and 2030. And that, that implementation has rolled out at those, those rates, which are depending on the scenario, either consistent with your historical participation rates in these programs or more aggressive for portfolio C.
Okay. It's an impressive number because I think again, you know, our customers did, really responded positively to the drought. And we're talking now only four gallons per person per day additional water use in a post drought era, or I should say in between drought era. So that's, it's aggressive. I think it's attainable, but it's impressive. And then one clarifying question about the December 5th components that are coming up. You said the gray water program would be reevaluated. Can you explain a little bit more what reevaluated means for us?
Yeah, so that's not included in the December 5th item. But we're just look, just acknowledging that we are looking at the gray water ordinance. And we've talked about that before, but that's not part of the, well, that only the incentive changes will be coming back on the 5th.
Great. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks, Matt. Monty?
And yeah, thank you. This is, this is really helpful. This gives us, I think, a lot of things that we can take action on versus, you know, I, I know there's a desire to, to have a lot of perfect knowledge and estimating our savings is, is a best guess. And I know that you folks are experts in this and you've, you've done a thorough and good job at, at estimating what we're going to get. So I don't want to belabor, you know, things that we want to know. We'd love to know with certainty, but we won't. I think that a couple of quick questions. Just on our, on our per capita, on our spending, our per capita spending on conservation, how do we compare to the rest of the state?
I haven't ran the numbers lately, but we had Peter Mayer come and speak to us during the drought that showed that during that time, which was we had a heightened level, higher level of, of expenditures.
Yeah.
We were above and beyond, I want to say it was.
Okay. But we have.
I could pull the table and send it to you.
Okay. It would just be great to know. I mean, ongoing, I know during the drought, we, we did more than we are doing now. I'm curious where our.
Where we are now.
Our 3.3 puts us just relatively because it'd be just good, good to know. Obviously, that's part of what funds the work we're talking about. I think, you know, just in terms of some of the reactions, I think we're starting to see from folks with the changes in our rates. A lot of folks I think are, are realizing suddenly like never before, how much water they actually are using because they've paid their bill over, you know, over the years. It's just slid into the background of something they do. And suddenly, wow, they're like, oh my gosh, that, that's what I'm paying for water. And I think that that really creates a really time limited opportunity to do something to reach out. Obviously, particularly to the people who are the highest consumers because they probably have the biggest shock value. And before it becomes the new norm and they just get used to paying their bill again, I think those are people who might be really open to our communication programs, our outreach programs that help them to identify ways to save water. It's, it's also the best response we can offer to folks who are shocked about their bills because there is a way, there's something they can do about it. And we are the experts who can help them to do something. So I want to really, you know, echo part of what Jed was saying in terms of communication is really, really important. And, and particularly this time right now, because I think we have a, there'll be that limited window where eventually people just be like, ah, that's just the bill I pay and, and not think about it anymore. We want to seize that opportunity. And, and it goes hand in hand with, I think, a comment that I would love to see explored, which is what if we really focused, what would a focused effort on our highest users be? Because that's, I, I think that where folks who are in the bottom tiers or in the lowest tier are, you know, are already doing the work and are the ones who are, have brought our average down. It's the people who are bending the curve in the other direction, our highest users. That what would our, what, what would our return on investment be on a targeted program toward those people? And maybe that would actually be more cost effective. And maybe that's already baked into, into, into your approach too. That wouldn't surprise me because that's not exactly a brilliant thought per se. But I'm just curious about that. I'm just going to run through my questions and you can choose to answer whichever ones you, you want. I think that, that the last thing I want to just point out is, you know, the, on the cost effective measures, you know, I, I think it's a good point, like what, how much are we really even spending on, on some of these programs that aren't very cost effective? But if somebody wants to take an action, don't we want to be there to be able to say like, sure. We're, you know, if it's not costing us that much. But I look at it, where, where would that time and that money go to? And would it generate a better, a bigger return? So it's the opportunity cost of, of those programs. I'm, I'm fine with us recognizing that some of these programs don't pencil out and they don't make sense. They're not a good investment. We're here to make good investments. But I think that I'd be curious whether some of these programs have value because they're not actually consuming that much time and money and they capture interest. And maybe that person who puts in a, a rain barrel also puts in other efficient landscaping and, and shares that information with their neighbors. And then their neighbors are like, wow, well, Joan down the street is doing all these things. Like there's other unmeasurable benefits, I guess, is the part that I think you guys can recognize. And it'd be, you know, I defer to you frankly, as you folks as experts about this to help us make a wise decision about where to draw that line.
Thank you, Monty. Just a couple of quick follow-up items. Carrie, the savings potentials that are presented today seem higher, at least to me. I could be wrong on previous goals for demand reduction. I'm sort of thinking back to our retreat that we had last March, I think, when you were sort of, you were, I think, I, I don't know if the, the goal was by 2045, but this seems quite a bit higher what we're looking at now. Am I just way off base or are we really sort of upping the game in, in terms of water efficiency?
I mean, we want to maximize wherever there is opportunity, right? So I'm not recalling the numbers that we.
I felt like it was in the hundreds, not thousands of acre feet saved per year. But anyway, I, I don't, it's, but, but it. So, but not a big deal, but I just, 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 it's interesting for me to see the, the shift.
If I could, Director Kushya, I'm Paul Salya, Water Resources Director. I think you're referring to, yeah, we did translate, you know, a thousands type cumulative number in 2045 down to an annual number. And it is remarkably low when you think about it. It's, it's a couple hundred acre feet per year. But year one, it's 200 acre feet, year two, it's a 400 acre foot accumulation and, and so on. So by the time you get to 2045, it, it, it does add up on average to that, that, that annual reduction. If that helps.
Got it. Thanks, Paul. On the, in, in the cost per, for implementation, the overhead costs, did we include the, or did you include the cost for enforcing ordinances? Is that also there built in?
It's, it's not. The overhead costs that were included only addressed the incentive piece or the, or you know, the cap staff time, that kind of stuff. But nothing going into ordinances, really focusing on the incentives, the measures that were analyzed specifically.
So that might be a helpful estimate to, to, to share. And hopefully we will see the full report before the December 5th meeting.
To clarify, yeah, December 5th is just the incentive changes. And then the master plan will come back for a future board meeting for an initial discussion.
Got it. Well.
So you won't see before December 5th, the draft report, but you'll see it in advance of the next board meeting where we're bringing it with recommendations.
Okay. Thanks for that. And I think, you know, just wanted to emphasize again how important this, important this effort is. And, and thank you for, for all the analysis. You know, the, on one level, the benefits of conservation, I think, are obvious to all of us, particularly as our water supplies become more variable. And, you know, we also understand how they can reduce our requirements for investing in infrastructure. If we use less water, that's, you know, fairly straightforward. But I, you know, what we don't talk about very much is the carbon footprint of our, of our water supply. And we, we know that our homes are the largest piece of our individual carbon footprints. And so reducing water, the amount of water that is needed to support our lifestyles has these larger environmental impacts that I think here at Marin Water, we want to be very supportive of. So great to see this, all, all of the consideration in, in this effort. Thank you.
Can I just go a couple of other points?
Yeah.
So just, I think we've already covered this, which is it'd be great to see the numbers on the non-functional turf and other ordinances, just, and what those, what those programs look like elsewhere and what would be the range of savings depending on the different types of programs. I also would like to, I'd also like to see what, if, if our conservation program can particular, can articulate a, a clear benefit and even a strategy to help low income water users. Because I think that is a really important facet. Water is for some very expensive. And, and I think that our conservation programs shouldn't be just targeted at the biggest water users who probably are not a low income members of the community. And I want to make sure that our conservation program also can, to the extent that we can, benefit our low income customers. So if that could be a facet that could be pointed out, I'm, I'm sure it's already baked in there. I'm sure there already are, but if we can pull that out and highlight that, I think that that would be really helpful.
Public comments, Carrie?
Yes, we have several. The first two are Phil Soder and Wendy Callens.
Thank you very much for the presentation and especially for the follow-up discussion. It's been really gratifying to see the shift in the last year and the increased focus on conservation. I'm really kind of blown away by, by the, the, the speed and completeness that the district has moved in this direction. We're reaching consensus that most of our activities in past years are focused on indoor water use, when the reality is that our focus needs to be on outdoor water use, specifically the use of potable water. If we looked only at indoor use, which is about 50 gallons per day per capita, so much or 10 million gallons per day or 11,000 acre feet annually, we could be comfortable that our existing supply and reservoir capacity could carry us through four or five years of severe drought. But the reality is that we're currently using at least half of our potable water for non-potable outdoor use. And that means that any useful study of water efficiency will need to focus on either reducing the use of potable water outdoors or increasing the supply of non-potable out, water for outdoor use and maybe both. We've also been making some tacit assumptions about our customers and how much they're willing to sacrifice so that we can continue using most of our potable water outdoors. For example, we assume that customers will accept lower quality drinking water by mixing recycled water or treated brackish water into our existing pristine watershed supply. We assume customers will pay even higher capital costs to bring desalinated water into our supply. We assume customers will, will capture more rainfall from the watershed at the expense of other species and with the chance of increased environmental releases. We assume customers will pay higher prices so that super users can continue to use potable out, water for outdoor irrigation. And we assume that customers will not pay for recycled water for outdoor use and it will be too expensive to even consider. I'm not sure all of these assumptions are valid, even though they underlie many of the strategic decisions we're making or not making. I think it's time to test these assumptions and either hold on to them or change them so that we have the most complete and accurate study possible. It's taken us a year to bring demand management fully into the water supply portfolio. And now I think it's time to make sure we're supplying our highest quality potable water to the indoor uses where it's needed and making lower quality water, especially recycled water, available for outdoor use. I also want to share that I spent a few minutes on the internet yesterday and looked at one, one other water district, the city of Austin, Texas is doing about recycled water. They have a ring of purple pipes around portions of the city with plans to expand it. They have several recycled water stations in high use areas where customers can fill up, put in a card and buy as many gallons as they like. Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy, please. And then after Wendy is Ed Jamison and Larry Minikas.
Yes, hi. Thank you. Wendy Callens with Sustainable Marin. I want to start by really thanking the staff for all the excellent work that they've done and especially for putting on a community workshop where I certainly learned a lot about what the different options are. And I think they've done a really thorough job and their data analysis. The one thing I would recommend is that. you see where you can be at 2045 based on your three scenarios. If you use the beyond maximum savings or even the most aggressive, when would you reach that same target? Would you reach it in 2035? If you used aggressive, would you reach that target in 2030? I think that is actually where you need to be comparing the three scenarios. And I would ask the board to direct their staff to give you that information. Just a couple of things that I learned at the workshop that I think would be useful. Laundry to landscape is not as effective as whole house to landscape. And I noticed whole house to landscape wasn't even considered in the scenarios. I'd like to see that considered. Also with rain barrels, another thing I learned at the workshop, rain barrels are more effective when you have a large landscape. Focus rain barrels on large users and people who have large landscapes. Finally, AMI. It really seems like AMI is a really important tool that you need. Now you've got your technology people saying, don't do, don't do full AMI yet because you have to deal with your operations. And yet it seems like when it comes to conservation, we really need to start implementing that AMI. So you've got one consultant's opinion, maybe you need a second opinion. Can you actually implement AMI without going full board on your operations? You know, do you really have to wait till operations are updated before you implement AMI? So those are the things. And then, and then finally, since I have a few more seconds left here, I want to reiterate that carbon footprint is important, the environment is important. When you're, when you're looking at the effectiveness, it's not just cost effectiveness. It's environmental effectiveness. It's, it's, you know, these are things that you also have to take into account because they're important. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ed Jamison and Larry Minikis, please.
Yes, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thanks. This was a very useful presentation. With consideration of the limitations expressed by Director Russell, I really like the idea of mandating hot water recirculation systems for new construction and for major remodels, unless demonstrated to be infeasible. And I'm pleased to see that gray water ordinance is being reevaluated. It's just not cost effective. Similarly, I believe the 2015 ordinance requirement for Las Vegas type landscaping and new single family homes and major remodels also needs to be rescinded. Lastly, I'd like to encourage district staff to report on East Bay MUD's discontinuous discontinuance of its AMI program back around last February, when East Bay MUD estimated AMI unit lives at 17 years with a 16-year payback period for effectively no return on the very significant investment. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Mr. Larry Minikis, please.
Yes, good morning and very much appreciate the conversation this morning. I will only focus on one thing and that's slide 19 and using 2020 as a baseline. And as we know, 2020 was the start of the drought and the start of COVID. So a lot of people were home. And I might suggest that that skews the numbers somewhat and that perhaps you'd take a blended approach, looking at years 2018 through 2022. It may not change it much from 120 per capita per day, but it might and give a more accurate picture of what our baseline really is. And again, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. I have no further speakers.
I think item five, Terry, is just the schedule for the next Communications Water Efficiency Committee meeting and our special board meeting, which is on February 21st, 2024 at 9:30 a.m.
It's tentatively scheduled because the board hasn't yet adopted the next year's agenda. But it's, it's tentatively scheduled.
Got it.
That's the normal.
Ron, can I make one quick comment on just in the last, some suggestion? And I don't know if other board members agree, but I do like the idea of not just having 2020, 2045 be our target. That showing either annual targets or 2030 seems right within sight. That your effort is going to be the most important thing we can do as a community to save water. And, and it's, it's something we can do right now. So I would love to see us have measurable targets in the short term that we can report on to our community and help people understand the impact of it. I don't know if others agree.
I would be open to the, maybe not a short term, but maybe not wait all the way to 2045, have some sort of benchmark in between there. Not to burn it down every year, but something that gives us check where we're at as we move towards that goal.
Anything else? Okay. And I can't remember, are we adjourning to a closed session today?
No, that's on Friday.
Okay, thanks. Okay, then with that, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would it help checking calendars for March?